Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, December sixth city council meeting. I'm Chief McCallroug.
Alderman Sankey? Here. Alderman Glad?
Here.
Alderman McClatchy?
Here.
Alderman Harding?
Here.
Alderman Strack?
Here.
Alderman Devine?
Here.
Alderman Miller?
Here.
Mayor Jett?
Here. Please stand for the flag. One religion.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda is a public comment. Normally during the public comment, you are to only make a public comment on items that are not on the agenda this evening. But for items seven A and seven B for discussion items, we are going to allow a public comment for those items at this time. So not when those items are up, but if you'd like to make a public comment regarding seven A and seven B, you're more than welcome to do that at this time. So is there anyone that would like to make a public comment right now before we get going?
Just as a reminder, when you approach the... Mr. Mayor, just a reminder, when you are at the podium, you're free to take your mask down so that we can hear you and that it can be recorded. So thank you.
Please state your name and address for public record.
My name is Mary Gibbard, and I live at three, three, two, four Waikiki Road in McHenry. Good evening, Mayor Jett, city council members. And it looks like no one's here from Linmark, is that correct? Okay. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on the issue of Linmark's housing development. The city has expended considerable money and effort on improving the Riverwalk. We live on the Riverwalk. We have also expended a lot of money and time, and we are consistently investing in the beauty and character of the Riverwalk. And we put a lot of our own time and money into keeping it beautiful. We have a lot of people who walk by in the summertime and comment on how lovely it is and what a nice area it is and how much improvement there's been in the Riverwalk. We definitely have invested interest in what happens at the end of Waikiki Road. One of my primary concerns is that Waikiki Road can barely accommodate the current traffic load. Kennedy East High School brings roughly 650 students on buses, on foot, or by car in the morning and leaving at the end of the school day. During dismissal, there's one narrow lane in the road between the pickup line for the high school kids and the cars that are parked on the other side, as well as a lot of students walking across the street with no regard for traffic. They don't look, they just go. I frequently had to pull over and wait my turn for a couple minutes in order to get down the road to my house. Additionally, there are frequent extracurricular activities with cars and buses from other schools coming and going all during the school year and on weekends as well. Fire trucks and paramedics are frequently needed at the McHenry Villa as well. And Kerry Electric's work trucks come and go all during the day. And semis come and deliver goods to them. They park right on Waikiki Road while they're unloading, and that also blocks the ingress and egress on the road. Adding a considerable number of cars to this traffic load with the developments that is being proposed would be dangerous, and someone's going to get hurt. We strongly oppose the notion that our area will be improved by the addition of a high-density rental property at the end of Waikiki Road. So thank you for your turn.
Thank you. Just for the record, I wanted to express some comments that this lady has made regarding Linmark. Linmark, we have not had any communication with Linmark since the denial by City Council of moving forward. So I know there's been rumors and people talking that, you know, that we're talking to them. We have not. And I know there's been some other things on my mind about, you know, my support towards Linmark. It was never the support of a project at that location, but it was support of being professional with Linmark and having them have the opportunity to work with the city in kind, whether it was that site or another site. So it had nothing to do specifically with that site, but to have a developer come in and just say, you know, just to, you know, say, hey, no, we want you out of City McHenry to a developer at the magnitude that they are. That was the only thing. So I wanted to kind of put that to rest because there has been a lot of people contacting me and rumors that are going around about me specifically. So I just wanted to say that. But next person that would like to make a public comment regarding this site or any public comment for that matter. See none? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Is there any items that the council would like to pull for separate consideration? See none? I'm looking for a motion in a second for five A through five H to be approved. Alderman Strack?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second? Alderman McClatchy?
Okay.
Thank you. Discussion on any of these items? Monty, please call her.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Sankey?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is six A, is a motion to pass a resolution approving the destruction of any executive session recordings that exist more than eighteen months for the approval of executive session minutes, for the release of certain minutes, and to keep certain minutes confidential. Obviously, Monty, our clerk, wants to present this item. Really, there's nothing to present. I think if there's any questions by council, but I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve six A as presented. Alderman Sankey?
I'll make a motion to approve item six A, semi-on review of executive session minutes meetings as presented.
Thank you. Alderman Miller?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion on this item? Alderman Glad?
It's not discussion, it's just a statement, just so that there's clarification that we're not releasing all the minutes, and some of them are confidential, and just the fact that it really just needs to be explained to the general public, the fact that there are still issues out there on some things that we've discussed that need to be still kept in confidential status.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right. Clerk, please call her.
Alderman Sankey?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is discussion item seven A, is discussion regarding municipal waste hauling services and direction to release the proposed scope of services. Director Strange, you want to go ahead and start us off?
Thank you, Mayor. So first of all, my apologies for not being available at the last council meeting. Some of the conversations I've had with those of you that have had questions about the scope of services may cause us to rethink our scope a little bit, but in general, we are recommending multiple scope options.
I don't hear you.
You never get used to it. Multiple scope options. And the big thing that we are going to be recommending is that when the results come in, is we are recommending getting started Saturday yard waste drop-off. That involves a few of the bid alternate options that we have. There was also universal support for the spring cleanup event, so that is going to be included in our base scope of services for all options. And then, as I mentioned before, if you have had conversations with since then, there's been some sentiment that possibly we're releasing too many alternates. We would be open to paring down a number of alternates and alternates that were listed. Other than that, we'll be open for discussion.
Thank you. Alderman McClatchy, go ahead. What's your definition of spring cleanup? Have a word with your director of corrections.
It was due until we held in April of 2020. I'm looking at the unlimited, one week of unlimited bulk items on the ready-to-rent these days, or?
Kind of like it was twenty years ago, or? Put it on your house, pretty much.
Yeah, one day a year.
Right, got you. Thank you. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I think if I recall, we used to do the spring cleanup a year back. It used to be in May, but April's a little early. Because people traditionally don't start cleanup around their house until the warmer weather comes in. And I'd really like to see that we started like the first week of May rather than April. I think April's a little bit early.
I have no objections to that. The rest of the council feels the same way. Make that change. Does everyone agree with that?
It makes sense.
You know, years ago, there were certain subdivisions. Mill Stream was one of them. They used to have a great participation. And just as a couple other subdivisions to where it was almost like a party street in their neighborhoods for sidewalk sale. Multiple homes that were involved the week before the cleanup. And needless to say, that reduces the amount that gets picked up. And other people that, again, the old adage that one van's garbage and another person's treasure. You know, that's what garage sales are all about. So I really think being in May would really definitely be a plus.
Thank you. Alderman Miller?
Prior to being elected as an alderwoman, I never thought I'd become an expert on garbage. But clearly, it's something important to all of us. And I spent an extensive amount of time studying the information that Troy gave us, as well as spending time with a neighbor who's a garbage person. So I forwarded to Troy my I Want List, which I would like to share with all of you as well. When I reviewed the other communities and tried to put together my I Want List in the form of a, if I had to go out to bid myself, what I quickly found in discussion with my neighbor who was in the garbage or wasn't in the garbage business, when we start to request thirty-five, sixty-five, ninety-five gallon toters for refuse, it becomes very expensive for the haulers to have all three of those devices available because they have to order them, they have to make them made, they have to have them customized for us. So I had suggested that we either retain a sticker program and offer one size of a toter because then it's one size fits all, and the cost wasn't that different from the thirty-five, the sixty-five, the ninety-five. So I had suggested that we offer a sticker or a one-size toter. And I think the larger is the better because that serves everybody's needs. Then, of course, I suggested to Troy that the thirty-five or ninety-five are recycled because some people don't recycle as much as others. So I suggested large or small there, eliminating the third size. Because, again, the same reason, why should a hauler have three different sizes available when most people, when you look at the grid of other communities, it's either the small or the large depending on the use? I'm in full agreement with unlimited curbside yard waste pickup, eliminating the Saturday for the human purpose, as well as the mess that it creates and our after pickup because people aren't there in time. They drop, dump, and then now we have a mess to take care of. But I also suggested, in looking at all the material that we had, that we consider doing a third or request for a third food or compost hauler that would make a third bin available, maybe at a cost, so we could do a year-round pickup of compost. So that that would be a food waste or compost, and see if we could put that in. If we did that, we'd be more likely to follow hauler rules and be more likely to be more compliant with that process. I do want to still see curbside leaf collection. And Troy, you and I talked about that, that that's a very important service that we continue to offer. And you and I talked about the fact that we might be able to limit that to like an eight-week cycle if we had a year-round compost service available. One bulk item a week. I think if you talk to our haulers, about thirty percent of our residents use that consistently, that there's one item that they bulk pick up, which is nice. And of course, all the other language that we have, the municipal building pickup and existing service to all customers with prior roads. The other thing that was in a lot of the other contracts where I picked up in the verbiage was the one-time electronic waste collection. And that should also probably be a spring thing. After Christmas, you typically get the new TV. The old TV goes in the basement, so you figure out you don't need it. And then it goes out to the curb in the spring, and then, you know, scrappers don't pick them up anymore. So we probably need to incorporate the one-time electronic waste pickup somewhere in the RFP. So that was my wish list. I already sent it to Troy, but I just wanted to share with everyone that I spent quite a bit of time going over the opportunities that we have, and if we're going to put a wish list out there, let's see what it costs, and let's see if we can pick and choose what we need.
Thank you, sir.
So just a few clarifications for you. The leaf collection is part of the base scope services. We'll add the game for this one. And then the current program, we do have, I'm not sure if it's biannually, but it's usually...
May or July?
No, just, you know, I don't want to repeat, but could we speak in the mics a little bit more? Because I know a lot of people back there may not be able to hear as well as the people that are on that. So?
Sure. You got me? All right. So leaf selection, that's part of the base scope services that will be included. And then the E-waste, we have it at least once a year. I'm not sure if it's once or twice off the top of my head, but we do have E-waste events. And then our specific is later already. So the compost would be a new concept. I would assume that that's probably something we could get pricing for. At least, I guess, the question I have in general is the recommended alternates for the scope of services. Are we comfortable going out for those? Or do we want to have those adjusted or pared down at all? Because there are, there are a lot of alternates. That's the one thing, if I could simplify the process and change, I would recommend potentially looking at pairing down some of these alternates.
Now, when we're talking compost, are we talking in lieu of the leaf pickup?
No.
No. She's, so it would just be an additional service?
Yeah, I believe what Alderman Miller referred to is some sort of compost, which I don't know how common that is, but I know it does exist in places.
I just tend to wonder how many of our residents would use that, you know? Because needless to say, an additional service is going to add cost to the entire program. And, you know, I take a look at some of the fees that others are paying, and it kind of makes me wonder a little, is whether we're getting the best bang for our buck. You know, I want to keep the rates down as reasonable as possible, and I just don't know. I mean, would we feel as far as compost, how many, you know, what percentage of the population is going to use that service?
I couldn't answer that question. It's probably small. I mean, it's...
Very small. And that's why I say I tend to wonder about that, whether we really want to add that in because of the fact that, like I say, now we're jacking the cost up as far as the total would wind up. You know, I take a look at the comparison table. You know, you've got Kerry here paying eighteen sixty-five versus McHenry at twenty-six thirty-one, and they're paying three dollars on a sticker, and we're paying three fifty. You look at Crystal Lake, and they're paying seventeen seventy-four versus twenty-six thirty-one. But of course, they don't have the bag service, so maybe that's why the toters are, for that, much smaller. Quite. Which is...
Well, yeah, most of the communities that have universal bin service have cheaper bin pricing. Typically, based on what I see, a lot of the cost of the trucks actually traveling up and down the routes is more or less picked up by the bin users, and you're getting mostly the disposal cost on the sticker pricing. So the universal bin pricing, you kind of, you see that cheaper truck or price for bin pricing.
Right. You know, but I know there are a lot of people out there, especially seniors, that do not use a tow. And they use it at the bag service, and they might only use a bag every two to three weeks in some cases. So we're talking, let's say, let's say even if they use it twice a month, it's seven dollars, and they would wind up basically probably paying somewhere around eighteen dollars or higher for a tow. So they're more than doubling their costs for a tow. And that's if those prices go down because of the fact that there's no stickers. So I, you know, we want to give as many services as possible. We also want to control those costs. You know, everything's going up in this world, and I'm sure when we get our proposals, the cost for waste removal will be up, but we need to try to keep it as low as possible. So I kind of balk on adding that other service only because of the fact that that may also take there to be that many people using it. I mean, we could put it in as an addition, couldn't we? We could, again, as an alternate or whatever.
As I mentioned, the list of alternatives is already, it's getting, you know, it's getting longer.
Right. I mean, my question would be, what would be the cost to the average resident for that service that in a lot of cases they're not going to use? There's a good percentage of people that aren't going to use that service, but they're going to wind up paying for it. And that's, that would be my concern.
No, I'd say we don't know unless we have to pass a pricing. So if the wishes of the council at large are to explore what that service would cost, we can explore it. If the consensus is not that, we can vote for a leave in any direction.
Yeah. It's just like whether to give it to the bag service or not versus the tow. Until we get some prices, we don't know where we want to go exactly. You know, it's kind of hard to decide specifically where we're at. I don't usually eat the bag anymore. I use a tower where I used to use a bag all the time. It's a lot more convenient. It keeps things a lot cleaner. But, you know, that's me. That's not the average resident out there that doesn't use the tow. Again, you know, I just want to see the proposals and the decisions we make for the greatest good of the best and of the most people. And I don't want to see those that don't hardly use the service taking too much.
Alderman?
I would like to see the alternative price for it as an add-on service to those people who want to use it.
Right.
You know, I'm not saying put it on every person's bill. I'm saying if it's an add-on and I can add it to my bill, and I have a blue can that I can use for my food scraps and my yard waste all year long, I will probably add that to my bill, and I will use it, and I'll pay for that service. I don't expect the rest of council to pay for my food waste.
Okay. So can I ask, because like I said, my apologies for the list of alternatives being a little too large. But I think, I think the consensus is there's a desire to see that add-on pricing. Obviously, the existing pricing, people are interested in seeing what that is. We as staff are recommending doing away with Saturday yard waste, which is effectively alternate one. I don't believe there is a real interest in any sort of a base feed, but there's also an interest in universal unlimited service, which would be alternate three. So could we, do we actually pare down our alternates and go with base feed, alternate one, and alternate three? And ask for compost pricing as an optional add-on? I think that'd be a concise, but still robust goal of alternates that would give you guys a look at all pricing you're interested in.
Alderman Glad?
All I was going to say is, you know, I was glad to see us come up with three bags, was it three bags a week being picked up versus the park. I'd hate to see us go back and, you know, to that park site because it is more convenient for the residents. But my reservations are, the way we've got it written in here, is unlimited yard waste pickup. And we had a lot of problems at the park when we dropped off at the park. People that do side jobs of landscaping and everything else, and all of a sudden they got to pull the truck and whatnot that they're dumping off. It was very evident that it wasn't just that resident that was dropping it off. I'd hate to see that happening to her. That's why...
There should be some of it. Well, the unlimited is at curbside.
I'm sorry, the unlimited?
The unlimited alternate option is at curbside.
Not at the park.
No, no, and I understand that, but that doesn't mean that if you're a landscaper, you're bringing it home and then dumping it in your front lawn because, you know, you can get it picked up there rather than having to pay to have it removed. And that does happen. And when, when that happens, it adds to the amount that gets picked up so that when they renegotiate contracts, they take a look at all this stuff, this is what gets picked up. So that's my only reservation with that. Whether, you know, I'll be honest with you, I go through on any day that there's waste removal or garbage removal in my area or any other area that I'm going to, you know, at a certain time. And I don't see that many waste yard bags out there at this point in time where they've got three free ones. I don't think that many people use that many bags.
Any, any sort of refuse program's going to have a certain amount of abuse.
Yes.
But I would say that if you look at the other communities that we're comparing ourselves to that have unlimited yard waste, I don't believe it's a problem as far as that type of abuse on a grand scale that negatively affects the level of service.
Well, it's a negative in more than just one respect. Again, somebody abuses it if they're, if they're bringing the stuff home because they're a landscaper or whatever. Their neighbors are suffering for it because that stuff sits there, and they're not going to bring it to the morning that it gets picked up. And that stuff's going to wind up to be a problem. Could be a problem. I'm not saying it is, but it could be a problem. And all I'm looking at is, is do we put some kind of limit on it, whether it's five bags, six bags, whatever, but at least there is a limit so that the abuse, you know, it's that open for people to abuse it. Because we start the program, it might go fine and smooth the first year or two, then there's a few people that start abusing it, and then it just blossoms out. Why open the door?
Yeah, I guess we specify it unlimited because sort of an arbitrary number of bags is just a difficult thing for contractors to bid on on any sort of level playing field, I guess. The reason we zeroed in on three bags with Prairieland during COVID was frankly because they took a look at what their operational costs were to run Saturday yard waste, and then they just backed into a number of bags that worked. But I don't know if using that logic is necessarily appropriate to competitive business universally with all the haulers.
Have we had any complaints called into the department to defer as the fact that they have to pay for more than three bags? Or do they?
Some do.
Okay. I mean, is it a lot of people or is it a couple people? And could we find out from Prairieland as far as how many times, they, how many bags have they actually sold over this, let's say, a year's time? You know, how many residents are actually using more than three bags?
I can't, I can't give you that information. They, because of the way they did their sticker pricings, they had refuse stickers that were used for both refuse and yard waste.
Okay.
So that data... And certainly, I would not be able to provide that data along the timeframe that we have to release. We do need to release this fairly quickly in order to have the results in, in February so that we can have, our goal is to have a hauler selected by the time we release the spring newsletters so that residents can be notified, and we can meet the kids, and we can kind of what's coming. And we brought this in front of council, I think it was the third time. We need to...
I understand.
Alderman Glad?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm comfortable with alternate one. It looks the same as it's, we're used to now except for the Saturday drop-off. My only question is, do we need the three different-sized toters? Would it be cheaper just like Alderman Miller was saying to go with this one-size tow instead of the three different sizes? We still need the stickers for, you know, people that don't want garbage, but the three different-sized towers, is that necessary?
No, it's not necessary. I mean, I would say anything that simplifies the scope of services will make pricing competitive. So I would, in terms of scope... Uh, so I, I would, I would, in terms of scoping and bidding it, if you wanted to go with alternate one, one size, that certainly makes it simpler for us to manage that bidding process.
Hold on a minute.
So I have two comments. Um, I would echo all of the minds that I would like to go with alternate one, um, because it seems to wrap everything we want. It has the stickers, towers and all the things without Saturday. Uh, I would also say we don't need three tower sizes in there. One tower size makes it clean, neat and easy to read. Um, and then I'm going to say to the unlimited yard waste, I have a lot in Cooney Heights, a standard lot. I have seven mature maple trees and I have a fully landscaped yard. I fill my three garbage cans every week with yard waste and in the fall I stack them with leaves and use my weed whacker to compost my leaves so that I don't overflow and I still overflow. So I am one of those humans that uses every square micro inch of my three major containers. And Prairieland is very generous if I overflow to a force. Um, so I would love unlimited, and I'm not a landscaper, but I have a full landscaped yard that I'm anal about and I clean it every week. In the summer, all my grass clippings are in those bins. I'm grateful that they take it and I don't have to haul it to anywhere on Saturday because that was truly a pain in the butt. So I really do want unlimited curbside pickup and I'm grateful that we're going to look and offer that.
Hold on a second.
Uh, I think I'll go with one more straight to, to echo Alderwoman's Miller comment. Currently Prairieland allows if you're using bag service, you can throw food scrap into that. What I don't know is if you go with their can instead of the bag, if you've got a refuse can or we go to a, a leaf container, if you could put food scrap in it already. So I'm just not sure what that option is, but I would agree, alternate one, but limited tower size.
Everyone agree?
Yeah, I like al- alternate one also. I would definitely keep the ninety-five gallon. Um, that seems to be the most practical use in my neighborhood, so I would definitely keep the, you know, on the higher end. I don't know which one you would have, you would eliminate if you decided to, but alternate one is, is my choice.
Thank you. Hold on a second.
Uh, yeah, I agree with, uh, pretty much everybody. I think one, um, is pretty much what we have right now. And, uh, that would include three, uh, recycling, right?
Correct.
Okay. And the sticker program.
Sticker program for refuse remains, right, under alternate one?
Yeah.
Under alternate. Okay.
And then Alderwoman Miller, you mentioned multiple sizes for recycling bins. Is, is that still something?
I think two sizes for the recycling bin is comfortable because not everybody wants to do a ninety-five or they don't need a ninety-five. When I live around my neighborhood, a lot of people have the thirty-fives for recycling. Um, but again, I have a ninety-five because I'm a big recycler, but if I get a compost bin, I would probably take my ninety-five down, but I think if we can only pick one, I would do ninety-five.
Okay. So you're com- comfortable moving forward with alternate one?
Hold on a second. Hold on a second.
Thank you. I, real quick, yes. Alternate one, uh, looks good to me. Do anything, when I, when I look at that on page thirty, on page eighty-two, where we do the breakout of the municipalities around us and who they're using and the pricing, uh, and when I see the bin pricing, um, I'd like to be able to offer these haulers the sticker or non-use of a sticker to see where our bin prices go if we eliminate stickers completely. Because two or three of these municipalities have quite low bin prices and they have a senior rate also. Uh, and they may have, you know, potentially it could be other types of group rates that we could look at doing here. But when you look at some of these, you see how much lower, I mean, we're talking twenty, twenty-five percent, uh, discount here, uh, when, uh, they eliminate some of these other, you know, even eliminate base fees, but also the sticker. So that, that, that was my one, I guess, concern or thought is just that they can show us a sticker and not sticker, um, proposal. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right. Uh, so, um, unless anyone wants to consider adding another alternate, if we move forward with alternate one, we go alternate one, single tower size, ninety-five gallon, two sizes for recycling bins, and we ask for alternate compost pricing. And then the universal, uh, scope service, kind of basic of services includes curbside leaf, uh, leaf collection, one bulk item, uh, weekly Christmas tree pickup, two times annual, electronic waste collection, spring cleanup in April, and then, uh, all of our municipal buildings and facilities covered with contracts. That would be alternate one with single.
Everyone agree with that?
I just got a question from here. Two, uh, recycling bins?
Two sizes.
Two sizes, yeah. Um, when I recycle at a state gas pool, I just go bring it out to the road and wait till it's, so I don't, I don't understand why two would, uh?
Well, some people are bigger recyclers than us. They're recyclers. Um, that, that was, I guess that was what, um, Alderwoman Council was over there and I thought was multiple sizes of recycling.
Let me just bring it back and we can change it. Right. I mean, go ahead.
Just because I run a code enforcement department, but when you, when you limit to ninety-five gallon towers and residents in particular in townhomes and condos, well, townhomes, are limited to a ninety-five, doesn't fit in our garage. And so they prefer smaller ones. Um, we do not allow garbage cans to be in front of the homes or townhomes, so they act, they do have to hide them somewhere. And if you're a, a single individual or an elderly individual, sometimes getting a ninety-five gallon tow out to the street is difficult because there's just some phone calls that we've had over the years. So I just want to kind of let council know that.
Okay. Does everyone agree to move forward with what Troy has presented?
Sounds good.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Then we're, we're, we're talking, uh, leaning to the thirty-five, sixty-five or ninety-five electric in there or what?
Most of all, the last consensus was universal, uh, I'm sorry, it was, um, alternate one, which is unlimited yard waste, single refuse tower size and two options for recycling towers size, plus optional pricing of the council.
What do you mean the option, two options in your target?
I think we're going to ask for pricing and not make it mandatory and hopefully that will keep that service from, if it, if that service is, I guess, bid out as an option, it won't inflate or deflate the standard pricing that we're certain that we want with refuse towers.
Well, we're talking two, two sized towers, I mean, only, right? Or are we talking all three?
One sized tower for refuse, two sizes for recycling. That was the consensus.
So your townhouse person is going to use a sticker for garbage and a thirty-five gallon recycling tow and that's going to fit in their garage?
Okay, if they decide to use a sticker, then they're stuck with a sticker if they live in there and they can't use a tow because they can't use a ninety-five.
They don't know.
Based upon the consensus reached, correct. They would not, unless they were willing to go with a ninety-five. Yeah. Did, Prairieland offers multiple sizes for refuse now, but the conversation went down on the single tower size for refuse.
I think you already, I want to continue with that. Right? Right? Hold on a minute. Go ahead.
So Director Polarecki, a good point though. People don't have room for a ninety-five. Is there a way where we could just price three different sizes or, or N one and then decide then? Do we need to, because they're not going to be happy using bags if they used towers all along and now they're going to switch to bags?
So we can, we can do that. We can go alternate one, but have multiple refuse towers size. I think that's the way we should do it.
All right.
Three sizes or two?
Just two. So, I'm sorry, I apologize. One large, one small?
Right.
Okay.
Thirty-five and, thirty-five and ninety-five? Does that solve a lot of that issue Director Polarecki?
Yeah, I, I think it would.
Okay. So we'll do two, two recycling options, two, uh, refuse, refuse and then all those other items.
Set around alternate one.
Alternate, yeah. Okay. The direction is clear.
Thank you. Uh, all right. Discussion item seven B is discussion regarding scope of, uh, redevelopment of the former, uh, former central wastewater treatment plant. Want to go ahead and discuss this? You want me to?
No, I will.
Okay. It's all yours.
So, um, just, I'll speak to everyone here at council as a reminder and the public that's, uh, here through this item also. Um, the, the reason that this item's on the city council agenda tonight is, is kind of to hit the reset button on this project. And I don't mean to square one because there's been a lot of work done on that site, but, but reset button in terms of, uh, you know, input from council on what they would like to see, uh, in terms of development or redevelopment on the site. And so I wanted to start out with the purpose of the, the agenda item tonight where there's no proposal that's brought before council, no concepts brought before council, as there was with Landmark. Uh, this is an opportunity for council, uh, based on what we've seen and what they know of the site, to provide some input, uh, to us as staff on what the next step, uh, should be or could be for the project. And then this doesn't have to be a one conversation, conversation either. It could be something that we, that we carry forward or carry on also. Um, but I wanted to circle back in terms of how we got to this point, just for everybody's knowledge, recollection, um, information, if you haven't been a part of it, especially the public, uh, that, because you may not have been a part of the whole process either. So a couple of years, obviously the site has been a central wastewater treatment facility for a number of years. Uh, the city owns the site, generates no taxes, serves no purpose now because we did an expansion to the south plant, uh, basically redirected all the, uh, waste to the south plant based on an expansion we did there a few years ago. And a couple of years ago moved to, it's, it's always been on the radar for some redevelopment of that site. Obviously it's a prime location, uh, on the Fox River, uh, in relationship to our downtown. Uh, you know, there's a lot of e- advantages to the site in terms of its, of its proximity and how it serves, uh, the city of McHenry and the surrounding area with an understanding of what the residents' concerns are in regards to traffic and density and all that also. Um, we put together, staff put together a couple of years ago, a request for proposals for the site, uh, released that request proposals without really, um, many guidelines on it. We provided information and put it out there so that developers could take a look at the project, take a look at the site and choose whether or not to submit a proposal to the city on what could go on that property. Uh, there were no proposals submitted at that time. This goes back to two thousand and nineteen, maybe even too early. I think it was basically all done in two thousand eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. Were no proposals that, that were received, that were vetted through the process of staff and the mayor and the city attorney, which was a small, uh, not small, committee that invited the projects out before we'd bring them to council. And so some of the feedback that we got from developers at that time was, well, there's still all the wastewater treatment facilities on the site. Uh, if you are familiar with the property, it all still had all the buildings on it and all the, and all the drying containers in it. They have the clarifiers still on the site, basically all of the infrastructure of the wastewater treatment facility was still there. And some of the feedback was, well, we don't know, you know, if, if we have to go out, we as a developer have to go out demolish that, what we're going to be left with in terms of any environmental concerns, et cetera, et cetera. So once we got that feedback, we made a conscious decision as, uh, a city, the city council, and with recommendation from the staff to undertake a cleanup of the site, basically demolition cleanup of this, of the facility. Uh, Troy was able to get the public works director, Strange, was able to, uh, reactivate a, a basically a half million dollar loan from the state that paid for half of the one million dollar, just, I think it's one million thirteen thousand, if my memory is correct, cleanup costs or demolition costs on the site. So we got about half of it paid for through the state through a grant and we funded the rest of that and basically got the site to its current condition. I'll call it pat ready, but basically all the infrastructure is, is off of the site from a wastewater treatment facility standpoint, knowing that that would be the end result of the site and that it would be something different for a developer to look at. They could actually go out and look at it, see what was there, know that we undertook as the city a process for demolition and cleanup and something different for them to submit a proposal on. And we went back through an RFP process in, uh, earlier this year and released, uh, the document, uh, updated from what it was in two thousand eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. Based on that, we released, uh, we got some interest from some developers, but one formal proposal that was submitted that you're all aware of now from Landmark. And, uh, we went through a process, again, the same vetting team, went through a process to interview them, make sure that they were legitimate in terms of financials, that they, that they've done previous projects in other locations, uh, again, that they had the wherewithal from a development standpoint to undertake some project here in McHenry, um, without necessarily a recommendation on, yes, that should be the developer for the site or not. In the RFP, it said that that would be the process and that the ultimate step in that process would be to bring any developer that got through the vetting process to council for input, for review and input, which we did, uh, back in October, whatever the date was, October twenty-fifth. And at that time, as, as you may recall, if you were here and if not, I'll just state it briefly, really the purpose of that meeting was for council to hear from the developer what their proposal was in their words, not our words as staff, but in the developer's words, and to make a decision on whether or not, uh, they were comfortable enough with that developer, what they were proposing, to direct staff to enter into negotiations with that developer to figure out if that project would even be feasible, uh, from a unit standpoint, from a TIF ask standpoint, tax, and from a financing ask standpoint, we have to run performance on it. There'd be quite a bit of, uh, negotiations that went into whether or not that developer would even become a developer of record. At that time, at the end of that meeting in October, council chose not to move forward with Landmark as a, uh, or not to direct staff to enter into negotiations with Landmark. And I have not had negotiations with the city administrator, uh, formally, any, any conversation with Landmark since that meeting because at that time it was, like, directed by council that they were not interested in moving forward with any negotiations with Landmark. So it would be a waste of my time to have any other conversations with them if council wasn't interested enough. And so here we are now, full circle comes back to this, uh, this discussion where, uh, from a staff standpoint and a redevelopment standpoint, we're looking for some input from council, uh, and I, I will say direction, but really at this point, input from council on, uh, what you would like to see have happened to the site. That doesn't really get in the process, whether it's an RFP process again, whether we just pick up for sale on the site and let people come to us and bring proposals to us, that we then bring to council for further vetting, um, but more towards what your use vision is for the site from a council standpoint. Um, and, and I think that if we can get that input from a staff, from a staff level, that at least we can have conversations with developers that may approach us or may be interested in the project and saying, you know, our city council really isn't interested in a high density and the neighbors aren't necessarily interested in a high density development or only residential development, or they would like to see mixed use on the site or, or, and so at least we're paring down what the potential uses are that council would at least consider. Doesn't mean approve, it just would mean consider coming forward for them to have a discussion with the developer, with the project. And having said all that, again, I'll go back to this fact that anybody that comes forward with a proposal on that site and ultimately comes to council, it's not going to be an approval at a one council meeting of, yes, we approve a project for that site. As you know, a lot of you know that have done the research on it, it's, it's been a tax, it's from a finance district, that there's going to be some incentivization done for a project that goes there and that requires negotiation, sometimes lengthy negotiations into the months and the bringing forward of a redevelopment agreement, RDA, redevelopment agreement that has all the terms of financials and what's going to be built on a site and all that to the city council. And so there will not be a single meeting, uh, that council approves any project that comes forward, but, but rather they'll, they'll consider a concept proposal from a developer and then direct staff to go and And then direct staff to go negotiate an RDA with that developer. And again, having said all of that, there are no proposals, there are no concepts that we have, uh, from a staff level to even bring to council. Because before we did anything else with that site, we wanted council to be able to have this discussion and, and talk to each other and talk to us staff. And what they would like to see or what their vision is for that site. So hopefully I wrapped all that up for everybody present until what has been done and where we're at today. And we'll hit the reset button and now we have a clean slate with no infrastructure on it, no structures on it. That we want to have some sort of development occur there, but what should that or could that development be? I'll be quiet.
Sure, that's it?
That's it. I was only like fifteen minutes.
No, that's good, that's good, I'm glad you hit on all that, so. Um, we're gonna go ahead and open up for, uh, city council to have a discussion, we're not gonna allow public discussion. Uh, we do wanna get, um, insight from all of you, uh, what you wanna see on the site like Derek had mentioned. Um, also, you know, something that we do do in, in, in the city of McHenry at least is, is bring the developer in to make a pitch to the city council. Technically, they don't have to do that, they could go ahead and go to planning and zoning, they could go ahead and do that other processes before it even comes here. So we try to provide that opportunity for the public or for the city council, at least have that discussion. Um, which I think is good for the developer to understand, hey, you know, you can come to our city and wanna build something in our city, let's have a good conversation. It doesn't mean that they come forward with a, a proposal and they want a million dollars and all that, that's all, they're gonna ask for the moon. Who wouldn't, right? That doesn't mean we're gonna give it, that doesn't mean, you know, I got called a Democrat because I was giving money to him by a resident. That's not what happens, that's not even, you know, we get proposed by the developer to, um, to look at what's proposed and that's it. And we want me to be professional about it, so I ask that, you know, the residents, if you have questions, to reach out to myself or the city council members. I, I, I make myself available all the time, if you hear rumors or you wanna have a conversation, I'm always available. So that's all I ask, because I think, eh, you know, things get, uh, tossed out there that is false. And we're trying to give that opportunity for the public or for the council to have that discussion prior to going to any votes, okay? So, alright, we're gonna go ahead and open it up for a discussion, uh, who wants to start us off? Alderman, go ahead.
Um, I kinda wrote down a few things here and when I get to later on my comments or maybe I don't know how to answer one of my questions about landmark. But anyway, just some, um, some simple ideas that I had, for that piece of property that's pretty prime. Uh, what about if we considered employing a consultant group? A group that would, you know, specialize in real estate or some kind of strategy that can maybe come to us and maybe have a plan. Or multiple or not, just one plan, or multiple plans, or something that we might be able to use for that piece of property because it's so unique. Um, that's just one idea I have. Um, I know another one is like a restaurant. I'm probably sure I've not shared the same views as some other people here, but like a restaurant, like, uh, three, uh, something like that. I've been to a few, um, across the country here and it's a pretty relaxed atmosphere. Um, they bring the family out, they got beds, pickleball courts, um, you guess, you know, restaurant, it's really relaxed. You can go in there, you don't feel rushed and it's kind of a meeting place where you can meet with the community and, you know, the whole community can actually enjoy this piece of property. Um, another thing is make it a park, add some kind of pavilion, some kind of, uh, outdoor music venue. I mean, nothing big or fancy, you know, that's gonna break the bank, but, you know, maybe we can get a consultant on that where we can. You know, have an outdoor concert there or, you know, some similar we do down in Miller Point or even at, um, Veterans Park. Um, it's just, it's a nice piece of property that, um, I think the whole community can enjoy. Um, my last thing is, what's our relationship with landmark? Because I think there's other properties that we can, you know, get back in touch with them, you know, some properties I thought was. Bull Valley and thirty-one, uh, Bull Valley, Tristly Road, it's just, I don't know what's going on with those properties, but, I mean, that's a gateway into our community. And I thought maybe, maybe they have an idea or somebody has an idea and, and, you know, that's a thought. And, you know, two other spots, I think about, uh, the state bank at Green and Elma. And then, um, wherever the savings bank was too, along, along the Fox River there, around, or where that ATM machine is. We got empty property there, maybe that's a spot where landmark or another builder can come in there and, 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 uh, and have a development there. So, I think my number one goal is for this spot is, is to get a consultant group, uh, that specializes in real estate development and some kind of strategy for that property.
Thank you, right. Uh, regarding landmark, obviously, you know, I want, I think staff and I wanted to kinda give that a break a little bit and just kinda see what comes out of this meeting. But, um, I would totally agree that, uh, I think the conversation needs to be had as far as, uh, for one apartments, right? And there's always this, you know, section eight that was going around regarding this, this, uh, developer and, and it's far from that. So, I think how do we draw the picture of what that developer does and maybe people visit the site, you know, and so forth. So, after this meeting, I'm hoping that staff and I can have a conversation and we can approach you individually. I'd like to meet with you individually regarding apartments, I think that's an important thing that we need to look at. And as we get more developments with apartments in the near future, I think staff would like to have a little bit of insight on where you feel as apartments go. Because I know there's a lot of negatives out there regarding apartments and I think we just need to have that open conversation individually, so. Um, did I, that, that's right, you have to. Alright, um, who's that? Alderman Miller, go ahead.
So, the next, um, uh, I wanna look at this property from the river in. I, I think when you look at it from the land out, I hear the public's voice and I have the same concerns about traffic and number of cars. And Waquigan Road is only so wide and how do we get people down there? But I think we're almost to the point that, you know, this is on the Fox River and the Fox River has a lot of boat traffic and a lot of, a lot of tourist traffic. And people get on the river and they come from Elgonpoint and they head north and they wanna get into the chain. But there's like six and a half miles of river that we have an opportunity to exploit and turn into a wonderful opportunity for McHenry. And we're improving it with the Riverwalk and we're improving it even more in the downtown heart of McHenry. So here we have this prime piece of property that we have an opportunity to develop. So when I look at it from the riverside of the property, apartments were an idea, but shouldn't it be a mixed use? Development with some commercial, some opportunity to take advantage of the boat traffic and have a restaurant, have a stopping place, have a destination. So, if it's going to be a multi-level building and support a multi-level building, should that first floor be? That destination location with residents above? Cause I do believe that it should support residents, cause, oh my god, the view is amazing, um, up in Nella River. But I think it also should provide an opportunity for revenue stream from the riverside. We've got the peers there, we've got opportunity there. Um, and I think that would be another stopping place for boats along the way. So I would like to see it developed as a mixed use development, business and residential. Less intensity on the residential, it would span, it would change the traffic pattern. It would focus a little differently on the intensity. Um, it would lessen the need for emergency services and bring in more traffic from the riverside, or at least in my eyes, from the riverside as well. Um, keeping again the focus on the, on the waterside, using the approach from the roadside, less than. The intensity of two hundred plus apartments.
Thank you. Next. Alderman Miller?
Sure.
Play that angle up.
Well. I don't like the high density way it is, I, I, I didn't like that. When I toured other development, I thought it was great, but then as I pictured that in McHenry, I, I couldn't see that. I couldn't see that from crossing the bridge, I couldn't see that from driving down Waquigan Street. It just, it just didn't fit, so I think we need to take advantage, like Alderman Miller said, of the river. And something, less density, I would like to see mixed uses possibly, but, um. Definitely don't want the, I don't, I don't see this, but, um. I'd like to see like ownership in it too, condos instead of apartments. I think, uh, if people are dedicated and wanna stay in McHenry and be part of McHenry, I think that's where we should go with it.
Alderman, classy guy. Yeah, uh, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, I'd like to agree with, uh, Alderman, with Alderman Miller, uh, I think it's a good point for somehow a mix in that area. That's gonna be like the, uh, ground, uh, it's gonna be, when you go down that river and you see that, it's gonna bring people to that. I mean, if you're the boulders, I mean, it's just gonna be the prime piece. I'll tell you two things I wouldn't be for to give that property away. And also, uh, tamper with the developer's donation feeling, I think that would be a no, uh, no go for me. But, um, I'm hearing some pretty good comments right now though.
Thank you. Alderman, strap.
So, I have the luxury of working in the real estate industry along with Alderman Miller. And I think as much as we don't want to see high density use, multifamily use, it is the trend. It is the direction that the industry is going. The current housing market, the indicators, everything that we're seeing today is deriving homeownership. To a lesser capacity and more of our aging community needing a place that they don't have to maintain. So as much as we didn't like to see the density of the two hundred and eighteen units that landmark presented to us. I think the indicators are that we're seeing more and more applications coming in this direction. And I think we need to be open to that environment, whether it's two hundred and eighteen or whether it's a hundred and eighteen, whatever that density looks like. I agree again with Alderman Miller's comments about mixed use, but with mixed use bridge traffic. And so you've got to find a way to manage the same concerns that the residents have now about the density that we looked at the first time. With how you can utilize a multi-unit building. Whether that's a boutique hotel and condominium mix, whether that's a restaurant mixed with condominiums above. I think all of that fits, but I think at the end of the day, this council needs to realize that the industry is shifting. And the housing market is shifting and we're going to see more and more of homeownership, a lesser, a, a lesser build in the future. I don't like it as much as probably everybody does, but this is the direction the industry's going, so. I think at this point, all of the things that have been thrown on the table are ideal, but I do think that we're going to have to be open to s- other types of industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman?
Yeah, you know, whatever gets developed here and other, other areas in the city, one thing we gotta remember is we're building for the future. And just because what a trend is now, doesn't necessarily mean that trend will exist in five years or eight years down the road. Um. There's probably a lot of people that, uh, seven or eight years ago were a lot younger and they probably had a lot different thinking. And as they got married and they had kids and everything else, all of a sudden their, their thinking and their priorities changed. Um, this town has always been, uh, more of a, um, family oriented, uh, homeowner type, uh, community. And even if the trend, uh, throughout the area is changing, doesn't necessarily mean that we didn't necessarily have to change here, you know? It's one thing that I disturb me is, is I keep hearing dollars and cents, uh, we were talking, uh, about the landmark, uh, proposal. And all the money that, that we would bring in for the tip versus bringing in townhomes. But, are we running a business here? Yes, we have to be fiscally responsible and everything else, but we're building this for, for residents that live here in the city. That have been here for years, that have, uh, roots and, uh, they have, uh, invested, uh, in a lot of cases, their whole lives here. And are we gonna change the flavor of the town because, well, that's what other people that wanna come into this area wanna have. Um. To get back to the specific area we're, we're talking about, uh, I don't wanna see anything anywhere near as large as they talked about as part of heights. You know, we want something, uh, you look at, uh, what we used to call the Riverwalk building, where Buddy's is and everything else. That blended in beautifully with the, with the downtown area, I was a little concerned as far as the height at the time. But that, that is a nice blend. Do we wanna see five stories all the way out there? Um, I've heard from some, some people that, that own the townhomes over there, they don't wanna have the, you know, a thousand feet away and look at, uh. You know, a skyscraper to them, uh, you know, what it would look like that being that close to their house. Uh, we've had townhomes there for how long now? Fifty years, eighteen years? And they blended in beautifully with the community, they blended in beautifully with the, uh, with the Riverwalk. And why wouldn't we extend something like that, uh, out there? You know, you start talking about mixed use, uh, with condos possibly, but, uh, you take a look at Shamrock a years ago, it was, uh, condos and. And yes, it's still condos, but now it's being rented out, uh, and owned by, uh, one company. Uh, which kinda becomes more of an apartment atmosphere than, than anything, and right back to what, we don't wanna see over there. Uh, townhomes, yeah, that could happen, but, uh, uh, historically you don't usually find somebody, you know, building townhomes and renting everyone out. Uh. I just think, uh, to some extent, I'd, I'd just rather see residential over there. Uh, I know the comment had been made about, uh, having a rotunda or whatever, uh, out there, uh, a park-like setting where we could have band concerts. And actually, that was probably one of the first things that was brought up for that property when they first talked about the Riverwalk and redevelopment in the downtown area. When they had the meeting upstairs in the, uh, Nobits House, uh, God knows how many years ago, twenty probably at least. Uh, and it sounds somewhat reasonable, but, uh, unless we acquired other properties, uh, be able to have the traffic to go in and out of there and in the places to park. I don't see that being feasible. I think, uh, what we need is, we need nice higher end townhomes that can be put in there, uh. And, uh, I don't know, uh, how many could go in there, I don't know. And, uh, what are we going to do as far as, uh, the peers? You know, I don't wanna give those things away, it was difficult to get them in the first place. Um. I can remember, uh, some deals that the city had to do years back when, uh, we started with the Riverwalk and. And just to acquire some more because of the moratorium on the river and, uh, negotiations that had to go on. Uh. I just think just to some extent, uh, if we were to get a proposal, I don't wanna see, uh, everybody looking at, well, I want TIP dollars. You know, the TIP was originally started with the idea that we were gonna redevelop the, the properties that were there. And it's kinda gotten the way to where we, we build, uh, the Riverwalk with it and, uh, now we wanna invest it to building, uh, private entities with it. Uh, again, you know, I, I sure like to see a lot more redevelopment. They, uh, what had been talked about, uh, the Riverwalk when it was first started, uh, was Neveerville. And how did Neveerville, uh, they tore down blocks of, of buildings and had developers come in and, and rebuild. I don't know necessarily if we wanna go that far with it, but, uh, you know, we've got, do have some open areas, uh, let's see if we can get some developers. But we don't wanna see a developer come in and, you go to, you go to our like the heights, go downtown. And what do you see, you see, what are they, four or five story buildings, uh, you go down, I don't remember which street and that's all you see. You know, it's almost like, like going, uh, uh, downtown Chicago, uh, Downstate Street and you're looking straight up at all these buildings. It's not McHenry, it's not the flavor of McHenry and I, I don't really wanna see something like that, I. It's not McHenry, it's not the flavor of McHenry and I, I don't really wanna see something like that, I. Two, three stories maybe, but I, I don't know if I really wanna see anything much higher than that, I don't wanna see uh. Uh gigantic uh deals like uh, every time you go down thirty-one, you see the bank. You know, it was built uh very stylish, but as tall as it is, it stands out uh like a sore thumb. Down everything else that's over there, even if it was redeveloped uh with commercial strips or whatever, that bank's sticking straight up. And uh I don't wanna see something like that on this property, I wanna see something that, that fits with what's there. Uh there are still areas uh that are right down the Walk Deegan Road that uh are gonna be fit for development down the road and uh. Uh what are we gonna be looking at there? Maybe what we need to do is really look at the entire area. Uh of how, how we want everything to redevelop and, and what we want where, rather than uh. Always focusing on one area, one, one piece of property and this is what, what do we wanna see there? But what do we wanna see in the entire area, you know? Uh I know the uh, the Riverwalk Foundation takes and spends a lot of time as far as talking about the whole Riverwalk. And I think they probably sometimes look at it more globally than we do. As far as the entire Riverwalk, yeah. It's good that somebody else is looking out too, because you know what, for people that, that throw their comments out, the better product you get. As long as everybody takes in everything that everybody says and, and, and everybody works together to get a good, solid product. The thing that, that concerns me to some extent though is, is uh. Are we building this uh with tax dollars uh of people that don't really care about the, the downtown area? I think we maybe need to educate people that how important downtown area is. Because it is not just historical uh for a city, but every city you go to uh that's always uh kind of their cornerstone of, of the whole city or town is the downtown area. So, hey guys, we can only do it right once, uh we do it wrong, uh there's no gold bat, so. I, I just think uh to some extent, uh let's not get uh, what we would like to see out there and what really works is sometimes two different things. There's a lot of things I'd like to see out there, but I know that they, they're not feasible. And uh, you know. I just wanna see us uh prosper there and I, I just think to some extent uh that is a prime location. It, it's a very difficult area to get, get into and I just think uh that private ownership is the way to go.
Alderman, go ahead.
Good to meet you. Excuse me. Uh and. I just. When I look at that piece of property, Alderwoman Miller expressed it also, um might be, might be a little bit different for hers, but. The way I see it is that you've got a piece of land here that's being bordered on one side by a golf course slash country club. You've got the Fox River, which is part of a major in the country, major recreational. Waterways that we have in our backyard. On the other side, you've got a marina. And it's right next to our downtown area. Uh with the Riverwalk that's being built and the foundation's doing a great job moving forward. In the next year or two, hopefully getting most of the uh riverside area completed. I. It, it's just an enormous hump for me to try even understand of why. That is not some type of uh. Ownership of property there because of all the resources that are around it. And, and a couple of people have, have, have mentioned. Public, uh multiple-use retail restaurant. I really like those concepts with possibly, you know, some type of, you know, ownership with it. But when Linmark was here and I listened. I thought about a proposal that never made it to the council level and I get, it just wasn't the right developer, it wasn't the right setup, but it was a multipurpose. And I went back to that developer after the Linmark meeting and I said, look. I, I just, I, I'm not saying a total no, but I'm just concerned about just a multi-use facility there just because of. Our accessibility to that piece of land. And um I think about some of the things that I've done, living out this area, living around waters for most of my life is that. I've been able to boat, go to these facilities, but then again, in, in off times like now, in the winter times, if you wanted to go to a facility on a lake. Or you wanted to go to like a ball knot marina, you're going through a neighborhood and then you're going through a real small road just to get into their entryway. And that's the way it's set up in a lot of these areas around that, that are on waters, 'cause let's face it, they would be uh. They would be promoting their business more from the waterway side, I get it, I would do the same thing. If I, if, if some type of multi-use was to come in there with some type of ownership along with it, so. I, I mean, I, I just can't get over that and I spent. A post, uh it was a Brian, is that the gentleman from Linmark, is that for Brian, Brian, I can't figure these.
Brad.
Brad, I'm sorry, Brad. I spoke with him for about an hour before the meeting that day and. You know, he did a great presentation and right here on page one. Third paragraph, page one, I read this to him and I say, look, you're pitching yourself as a group that's got forty, four thousand eight hundred apartments, three thousand condominiums and town, and, and townhouses. Mid-rise developments, uh a half of these class A office space, commercial shopping centers, among other types of hospitality properties. Tell me why you wanted apartments and I just. I'm in the business, I felt like I got the runaround answer and it, it just wasn't comfortable to me. Uh I'm sure they do great, I walked through the apartments and really, it's fantastic. It's a beautiful facility, I wish we could buy the spot for it, it really is. But it, that's not the place for that size units and. You know, my, my key concern is, is just having uh. Just having some type of uh ownership along with potentially multi, multi-use and, and retail use, 'cause I think. That might be stretching it just because of the accessibility of that, of that piece of land. And to bring it all, all around, you know, part of the presentation, I can appreciate the city administrator more of going through it again, is that it's an opportunity, okay? I go through many opportunities, a lot of people here in the business on this site go through opportunities every week, every day of the, every day of the week. And you know what? We don't always get. Every opportunity in front of us. And you have to just move on and try to uh. Get the next opportunity in here. I know that's putting it on the shoulders of staff and to the council to a certain extent also, but it's what we have to do. And we're sitting here and we work here for the city in McHenry and that's, you know, the way I see it and we've got to try to do and fulfill the needs of that piece of land, what's. Best for the city as a whole, not just for their neighbors down the street, but you know, how is it going to? Take one of Alderman Glass's comments too, you know what, it's not just for the next few years, it's for the next fifty years at least, so. You know, that's what we're looking at here and uh I, I just say let's. If Linmark wants to have it discussed with us, great, I, I'm, I'm open to that, but um I, I think they got the message, they understand where we're coming from. I wanna be able to see, potentially see, hopefully get some other phone calls, some other people coming in, and guess what? We gotta go out to them too. We gotta go to the developers. We gotta pitch this thing. And, and, and I'm not in the field of some of the people that are sitting over here that are definitely a lot more knowledgeable than I am, but getting that word out, we gotta figure that out. And uh, you know, uh move forward. And uh, you know, I just uh, I, I, I just think it's just a, just a prime piece of property, once again. Country Club, River, Marina. To, to me, that, that just defines that we can get some kind of ownership in there. Uh that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you for your input, I mean, there, there may be others in council members, but I wanted to throw this out there while I was still thinking about it in terms of process. In terms of process, because I didn't really have, honestly, I didn't have a clear. Vision for what would happen after tonight's discussion, I, I honestly didn't, I wanted to come here, what council had to say and provide input. Uh but I think um my suggestion for what the next step would be is all, is to take all the, I've written down, obviously it's in the minutes, I don't blame the minutes too. I might have a couple sheets here of notes from everyone, is, is create a redevelopment or a site profile based on council input. Uh what I heard, it doesn't have to be a final, it can be the draft version of it, to bring back the council to say, this is what I heard. This is my summary of what I heard the council uh would like to see or at least would um, would uh consider uh if proposed on the site. And that way it starts to lead down the path of something that we can provide to developers or potential developers or if we're contacted staff. Because right now, if somebody contacted me, I wouldn't have an answer, like, hey, we wanna do a development on the site, what does the city wanna see there, I would just say, I don't know what we wanna see there. Except uh tonight, I have some input from council, so my suggestion would be, I'll take this, I'll summarize it into a development or redevelopment profile. That we can bring back before council for a next discussion or another discussion, just to make sure, maybe you all, we'll have an opportunity after tonight hearing from each other. To give us some more thought and, and wanna provide additional input too, so that, that next step, bringing it back to council as a redeveloped profile or whatever you wanna call it. Would, would provide us all or you all an opportunity for additional conversation. And you know, while, while it's important that, I think we keep moving forward on something happening on the site. I will also remind you and fall back to the fact that we're also working in a parallel path as, as staff on getting the TIP extended. Um again, for, for public and um attendance that may not know, our TIP expires here in a couple of years. Council provided direction or acknowledged that we should extend that TIP an additional twelve years, which is all that we can extend it, this past initial twenty-three is, is twelve years. And so we will be petitioning the state to extend that TIP. And again, that's not just for this site, but for our entire improvements that happened with our, our entire TIP district, I mean, the river police wouldn't be there. Townhomes wouldn't be there, a lot, a portion of the Riverwalk wouldn't be there, and other improvements that we have done in the downtown wouldn't be there if, if the TIP wasn't in place. I mean, we wouldn't have been able to do those projects over the last twenty years or twenty-one years, so. That's something that no developer's gonna wanna come to us knowing that the TIP's gonna expire in a couple of years anyway, so we have to work on that process here in the winter and we're already working on it in the spring to get that TIP extended. Another twelve years, so we have some time to buy it here anyway over the next few months to be able to really put these thoughts down, bring it back for additional discussion if that's what council wants to do. And not have to rush into any decision-making on what we wanna see there, we can just keep up talking about it or you can while we're working on the extension of the TIP. Does that sound?
Sounds good.
I agree.
And for the, the residents, I'm taking all of you are from Walk Deegan, uh the townhomes there. If you could, my email's on the website, we want your voice to be heard, so if you could email me on what your thoughts are on that point, so that way as staff, we can certainly uh take your input as well, okay? So please email me and I'll get that over to staff, we'll put that on a sheet as well, so that way um, you know, maybe there's uh, uh things that were said tonight, you're like, oh, that'll work, or maybe not, so. Please give me your input professionally, please, uh that way we can go ahead and add that to our list, okay?
You know, density is a concern, obviously, and traffic is a concern, I mean, we, we know that, we've heard it from you and, and council and we've had the same concerns in the ass of it. We had the same concerns with Linmark's proposal and, and certainly I don't live there, but hearing it from you, the residents that do live there, that's something that we'll make sure that we. That's always in our head as we bring proposals forward or talk to developers, um what they may wanna see there, that that's gonna be a concern, so they have to be ready to address it. Thank you very much for your input, council.
Alderman?
Yeah, as long as we're talking financials, uh that property uh basically with the uh. Demolition? No, well, with, that's the demolition, but with the uh peers. It, it's value comes to what, about a million and a half dollars?
One point four nine.
One point four nine.
Okay. And a million double cost.
Now, exactly, who pays the million dollars, a half a million was grant money, the other half a million was the water and sewer funds. Correct? That's where we, where we got it from is the water and sewer funds. So irregardless of what we do with this property. A million and a half dollars has to go back to the water and sewer funds. I mean, are, are we charging the, the people that use the water and sewers? That pay those, those fees? They're paying for that, that project as far as cleaning it up and then. We're just gonna either give this, the property away or sell it, what is it, the dollar one?
So two things.
So that, that million and a half dollars could actually pay off part of the debt service.
So two, two things.
Let me finish, let me finish, please, okay? And that's the thing that I remember when Smith Engineering did the first uh. What would you call, estimates of costs as far as closing the central treatment plant. Or whether we would keep the central treatment plant, redevelop it and just expand the south, uh just a, a small amount. And there was like an eleven to thirteen million dollar difference that the, the water and sewer funds had to absorb. And we're paying the debt service on all that to get rid of this, off of that property and, and move it all to the south treatment plant. Now granted, our, our FPA's uh facility planning areas have shrunk considerably uh over the years. And uh we were, otherwise we wouldn't have been able to move to the central probably, or else we would have had to find a new location. But that all happens. Now it's time to get back to pay off part of that debt uh when we get rid of that property. Rather than uh the residents that are using the water and sewer funds having to save that debt. That million and a half dollars should come off of it. And I just wanna bring that up and put it on record, that, that's my biggest doubt.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is staff report. Ross, go ahead.
Uh thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to give a brief update on the Authentix project, uh the, the two hundred and eighty-eight unit apartments behind all these. A couple of things were brought, brought up today that I wanted to address. Uh first and foremost, sewer connection has been made at Lake Boulevard and Route Thirty-One, which is a good step, they're in the process of uh putting the asphalt and concrete back down in the intersection, restore the intersection. Moving east on Lake Boulevard with that standard terrain, um up into, into the project area, so that, that's a good thing. Existing tree lines, if we're on the eastern property line, I just wanna make note that uh we as staff met with residents, Alderman McClatchy was out there with us as well. We were able to save the existing tree lines up against those residents' homes um and establish a buffer. Uh again, I just wanna put this on the record that we did work with those homeowners and the, the developer to save the existing tree line into there. Another item that was brought up today was a walking path that um. If council remembers at the conceptual plan, uh staff recommended an internal walking path in that uh subdivision. In order for the residents of that subdivision to have a, a path to recreate on. So that was a, a suggestion by staff that council agreed with. What was eliminated from that property was a walking path that connected to Almond Lane and our Pine and Birch. At that point, we weren't sure how Lot Two was gonna play out, but the residents spoke up and they did not want. A connection from the multi-family to the single families, so we eliminated a walking path that connected those two. The interior walking path or the development itself was uh approved at the council level, at the planning and zoning level, so. Just a couple items that I wanted to bring up. And then um. And then, two minor revisions have been made to the plan so far. One minor revision was for grading due to the fact that we had to keep, we were keeping the tree line, had to do an alternative grading plan, which just changed a few contours along the eastern property lines, the water would drain properly. And then the second revision to the plan was a minor adjustment to retaining wall on the eastern property line. Everything else about that project is exactly how it was approved at the council level, so I just wanted to make sure council was aware of those items. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross.
Thank you.
Any other staff reports? Steven?
No.
Um, Mayor comment, I have nothing. City council comment? Oliver Miller?
I've had quite a few residents call about Patriot Estates and the new HOA and new management of Patriot Estates. So, if they all haven't caught the wind of it, it's a lot of disruption out there, a lot of fee increases and a lot of unhappy residents. I've responded, "That's not a city issue, thank you for keeping me prized." It's not a city issue, it's an HOA issue, and they're just very unhappy out there. So, I know Ross, you and I have been out there together, I'm sure you're taking phone calls, but as people are wandering through the city, there's just a lot of unrest out there.
Thank you, Oliver.
Alderman Tanty?
Just, I think we should formally recognize that, I mean, it's in the consent agenda, when we passed five A was the purchase of that property, and I want to thank staff, and especially I want to thank Mayor Jett for his work on getting this done. Well, I'm being honest with you, you know, even though it's outside my ward, I've expressed my concern, it's about just being able to do something over there and be able to offer some more parking options, so it's a great item. Thank you.
Open word of honor.
Well, I'm over there.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other comments by the city council? Motion second to adjourn?
Alderman Tanty?
I will read that motion.
Second?
Alderman Strack?
Second.
Martin, please cover up.
Alderman Tanty?
Yes.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Oliver Woman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Everyone have a good evening.